This conference will now be recorded.
I said I'd stay and do any roll calls or whatever is needed. Or it's clean dishes. I think I'll stay up here.
Okay, am I unmuted now?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, why isn't, oh, that's why it's not working. Forgot my little flip thing.
Looks like we're just missing one person.
I think we're missing two.
Yeah.
And Mike?
I don't have their phone numbers, but I have their emails, so I'm sending them a note.
Thank you.
I feel responsible for the snow this week because I put our winter coats away.
Yeah, I know. I put the boots away, so I'm partially responsible.
That's right.
Hey, I'll take the rest. I packed up the heavy sweaters.
You guys are about a month ahead of me.
Well, you probably don't have snow out there then.
Well, I traveled away and forgot a coat, and I've been just fine. So I think that just a little bubble of cold has been left there, and I've brought the warm weather with me.
Now we found who's truly responsible.
Okay.
All right, well, we have a quorum here. If someone else joins, they'll join. We don't have anything real substantial on our agenda. So I'll just go ahead and make a motion to open our meeting.
I'll second it.
You're opening the workshop meeting, right?
I guess we have to start with the workshop meeting, yes.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Okay, so do we get a second?
I'll second.
All right. However you want to do it, Dorothea.
I'm used to doing a roll call, so I'll do a roll call. Member Loda?
Aye.
Member Shannon?
Aye.
Member Marshall?
Aye.
Chairman Belistrak?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, so we have four members of the board present right now. John is missing, and Mike is missing. They may attend later, we'll see. So I'm not sure how to structure our meeting. We had the application for the variance is effectively moot. I sent around the, the building inspector emailed me, but I didn't email the rest of the board with his interpretation. So I just forwarded that out a little while ago, so if you haven't seen it, I presume the applicant didn't withdraw it, but given it's moot, then it's off our, off our, off the table for us. Mindy, if you have any thoughts as to how to formally handle it, please?
No, there's nothing to formally handle. I mean, it sounds like the application has been withdrawn de facto because it's not needed anymore.
Okay, very well. Um, so we could just talk about a couple other miscellaneous things, then. We don't have a lot to go over. The, Dan had forwarded notice to me that the village is considering changing video conferencing providers from GoToMeeting to Zoom. And I forwarded a note around to everybody about that. I didn't know if anyone had any thoughts on video conferencing. The change doesn't make much difference to me.
Nope. It's a little more convenient in my eyes because you can do breakout sessions for attorney-client privilege or executive session and then come back after people still stick around. So it's got some nice convenience, especially if we go partial live versus virtual.
Okay. So Dorothea says the Village Hall is going to be opening back up in a few weeks.
Wow, yes. We are looking possibly to open in mid-May, but having said that, we are looking at live meetings plus the virtual component because we have had such a great attendance through virtual. It's offered a convenience to the public, so I don't foresee that ending anytime soon at this moment.
I have a question, Dorothea. Regarding virtual versus live, if New York State gives the option to remain virtual, is it a requirement that we be live?
No, it is not a requirement to be live, but we're, it's the municipality's choice. We could be live right now, but because with issues with the meeting room, it seems like a large room, but then when you start spacing to give people space, we have to order in the plexi-shields for the table to make it work. So everybody will be in their lone little cubby, and then by the time you had staff and everybody before, we were lucky if we could get three people from the public, and now with the way we're setting it up, we should be able to get at least 10 or more, so it does allow for a meeting. So we would like to get back to that. I think for applicants, in some cases, it's easier to address the board in being able to be present. So, but we will offer the virtual component, and that's what we're trying to piece together as well.
Your understanding is at this point, though, once we reopen, there'll be the expectation that members of all boards participate live?
That I have to clarify. I'm not quite sure if we can just have a board member appear virtually instead of, I mean, you always have that ability, but it gets into a different kind of posting for the meetings that, you know, there's the legal requirement posting where you're present from. I don't, I think that's still gone away because that law has, and maybe Mindy, you can speak to that better, that law has been override with the open meetings law.
Right, so the governor's, the governor's executive orders have stayed the requirement in the open meetings law that all open meetings be conducted in person. And, you know, every month he extends it by another month, so, you know, monthly he's been extending it. So the requirement is met by conducting a public hearing by remote means with all the things that go with it. Unless the governor changes the order or doesn't renew it in the next couple of months, then we can continue as we have been going, which is, you know, either completely remote or a hybrid. A hybrid meeting. If the governor does not renew the executive order that permits public meetings and public hearings to be conducted by remote means, then they will end unless the open meetings law is changed. We'll have to meet in person.
I think what Dorothea was referring to is the requirement to post a legal notice on the door of wherever you're at if you're doing video conferencing. So if you're in a hotel in a different state, you got to do it in a public area, I believe, and you have to, so you got to go sit down there in the bar, and you got to post a notice that there's an alternative meeting location that the public is welcome to attend.
Right.
And I presume that's all stayed for the time being by the governor's orders.
Correct. That is currently not in place. That's why this allows us not to have people show up at your homes and want to watch you and do your business.
So until that occurs, sorry, so until that occurs, Dorothea, have you had anyone on other members of the board suggest that they might like to remain virtual until a later time, or do you feel like it's going to be up to each board, or has the village put in an ordinance that once we're live, everybody's expected to be there?
They haven't put ordinance out that everybody, all the boards have to comply with being live. I think Historic Preservation Board would prefer to be live, just given the issues they're having with technology and being able to really see and work with applicants. That has been an issue. Your board, I think you guys have been quite able to run a meeting completely this way with no issues, and it's different. I think everybody has a different experience. I think for the Village Board, it's a combo. They like to see the public, and they've had some issues. It's different across the, not to use the word, but it's different across the boards. Everybody has a different experience and feel. For us, for the clerks, I like the live because then I don't have to do the transcripts. The transcripts are very time-consuming on us, so it's, um,
Okay.
But we'll do whatever which board wants.
Yeah, however, once you do the transition to Zoom meeting, then I think most of the Zoom platforms have the ability to create, to generate a transcript from the meeting. And many municipalities are using the Zoom-generated transcript and not asking their clerks and recording secretaries to transcribe them.
Actually, GoToMeeting does give us a transcript, but it's not good. So it'd be interesting to see how good Zooms is because GoToMeeting, what you say isn't what you say. We have to go through and check them to make sure there's, I'd say 95% accurate. You can't get it 100%, even though we do the best we can. So we'll have to see what the Zoom one does. But obviously, we'll do whatever our boards want to do, and I think Mayor Plummer would feel the same way. If you guys are more comfortable being in your homes during this timeframe, because the the COVID hasn't gone away. We're still seeing several cases, I mean, a lot of cases every day. So I get that people aren't ready to step into the Village Hall. It's kind of a little unnerving for me to open those doors because we change our environment in a heartbeat, so. But we want to try to move forward, so that's what we're aiming for.
I guess that'll open it up just to hear other people's thoughts on what they might prefer for our board to do. Yeah.
So I would appreciate when we have big plans, if we ever have actual plans to look at, I think it's so much easier to do live. But, you know, I'm for remaining flexible. A meeting like tonight, why would we, you know, have to meet in person? But again, with, you know, actual plans to look at, I find it very helpful just for guidance, looking at the plans, number one, and I think it's easier for us to discuss when we're all looking at, you know, the same, same piece of paper. So I'm, I'm for kind of playing it by ear.
Okay, I'm finding being able to attend meetings while traveling to be extremely helpful. I think I've been away for something like half our meetings this year. Unfortunately, during, I didn't get a break from the pandemic. I still had to spend something like four months on the road, unfortunately. Customers keep on wanting their stuff done. I'm sure Mindy, you're sure her customers do like that. So, yeah, I'm finding it a big relief to be able to at least have the option of participating remotely. It used to be that I'd have to reschedule my work trips around meetings, and now I just go and if I have to attend a meeting at 6 o'clock, it's not a big deal. So I'm finding that very helpful. So, but I agree with Susan. If we got a big set of drawings to look at, it's nice to be able to sit in a workshop and just point at things on the drawings and say, well, what do you think about this or that or whatever? That's helpful. So I guess we'll have to see what comes our way. I'd at least like the option of virtual, whether we do in person or not. I don't know what everyone's status is, but I've now been fully vaccinated. So I'm not terribly concerned about seeing a few other people in the meeting room.
I'm one shot in, one to go at the end of the month, but I've got two kids at home that aren't going to be vaccinated for a long time, and there's still uncertainty as to whether or not the virus, whether or not if you get the vaccine, Pfizer, if you can be a host or not. So there's enough uncertainty that, you know, I know the kids with masks just shrunk down to three feet inside. I don't know if for adults it's still six or not, but I don't know. So I have a little bit of hesitancy still coming public just because of the kids. I don't want to do anything stupid or just assume a risk that I don't have to. But in the same vein, you know, I recognize the additional work, Dorothea, may place on you. And from a preference item, it might be easier to all be live. So I like the idea of remaining flexible and just maybe proceeding forward with that as our perspective.
So, Dorothea, would you, if we were meeting in the room, would we have the option of hearing audio from people connected via Zoom?
Correct. That's what we're trying to work on right now. And be, to be honest, I'm going to be reaching out to the town, talking to their IT department. Justin Lake Gibb came in, met with me and Marina. We looked over options, checked our sound to see how it sounds, the lighting in the room. Because as we know, our room tends to be more a little bit mood lighting, so we're trying to see if that's an issue. So we've been playing around with things to see exactly, you know, what's the best view? How to set up a camera so the board can see people and we can see the board. So it's a little tricky getting all those pieces together, so that's what we're working on. And also, you know, measuring the table for plexiglass as well. So there's lots of parts and pieces in the air to try to get all together at once. So, you know, like I said, we're shooting for the middle of May, but then maybe, you know, talking with everybody, maybe we decide, okay, maybe we just open the village doors in May, June for the board meetings. I think we're all going to be flexible, given everything that's going on. I mean, they're really, as long as the governor has the order in, I'm not rushing. I'm not worried about the extra work because that, you know, we don't have a time limit on transcripts, like we do minutes. We can get to them when we get to them. So, and having, Marina's got a Godsend. She does things wonderfully. So she can bail that stuff out much faster than I can think it. So we have a great crew, so we're going to do what our boards need to do for this. And I don't want to open and do it wrong. I want to open and have it, you know, everybody go, oh, that was bad. No, we want to do it right. So.
Maybe we'll be the last board to adopt whatever changes come forward.
Yeah, our application deadline has elapsed. I haven't heard anything from Steve as to whether we have any new applications yet. It's probably due to check in on him about that. Last I'd heard, like a week ago or something like that, we had not had any new applications for May, so we may have a quiet month. So Dorothea may be off the hook regardless.
Well, nobody can find a contractor these days, so it might be quiet for a while.
That's right, yeah.
Super hard. I said super trying.
Yeah, I got to get a trim carpenter, and I'm, I can't even get the guy to give me a quote on trim, so, anyway.
Two board members are present. I'm seeing Mr. Reynolds on screen, and I'm seeing our new gentleman, and I lost his last name off the top of my head.
Kachura.
Kachura.
Thank you.
Kachura.
Sorry about that, Mr. Kachura. Too many names go in and out.
That's all right.
Day around six months, and I'll remember, I promise.
Yeah, so we've been chatting for the last 20 minutes about virtual meetings and so on, so Village Hall is, the summary is Village Hall is scheduled to open approximately mid-May. And I think the general consensus is people would like the option of possibly meeting in person, or when we do meet in person, still have the option to connect virtually if that's possible. So I don't think we've resolved anything, and I don't know if we're, what we're doing for an applicant, for.
Broke up.
Application wise for May, last I heard, which was, I think, a week ago, we had not received any new applications. John, we had, we've had many quiet months since COVID started.
Gotcha. So, quick question. We're starting at 6:00, but I guess I looked on the website, it said 6:30. Is there a disconnect on my end?
No.
It said both on the website. It said a workshop at 6:00 and a meeting at 6:30.
Not, so the website actually has the calendar that if you, if you go over the calendar with your mouse, the little asterisk pops up at 6:30, and only if you click on it, when you open it, does it say that there's a workshop at 6:00 and then the regular meeting at 6:30. So, John, you're probably fine, but every, every half hour roughly before every meeting, we have a little bit of a workshop just to talk through things before we go public.
I will send that to somebody who will adjust my calendar.
So in general, we start at 6:00.
We'll change the website to reflect that. It really should reflect that you're starting at 6:00.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, so I think we talked at length about video conferencing, and I guess we'll have to see how things go and come May. Just to go over a couple other things quickly, Marina was going to work on, has been working on putting together some training materials. She was being a bit slow. She was trying to get a book together about that, and I kind of thought, Mike and John, you wanted to do, perhaps actually start reading things right away to be ready for meetings. So I sent you a few training materials, some of the state materials and some stuff from NICOM. I don't know if either of you have taken a look at any of that yet.
I skimmed the website. I also have a PLI subscription, so I checked that out too. I just haven't taken the class yet, but I will.
Okay. I found a source, I think, I don't remember now exactly. I think it was NICOM, and it had, it started with an overview of planning board, and then the next is an overview of zoning, which I did the overview of planning board, and I'm going to do the overview of zoning next.
Okay, good. That's good to go through that. And the other one is that, that Coon Guide to Zoning is a very good one. It's a good overview of zoning in general. Talks about variances, talks about all that. So there's a few options that got forwarded around. If you guys do training, please email Marina and let her know when you've completed one of these things, so that she has records of it. I guess the only question for you is, are either of you in need of hard copies of any of these materials?
No. No.
Okay, because I think Marina was going to put in some time to pull together some training materials in hard copy form, and I wasn't sure if anyone wanted them in hard copy form or not.
I'll look again at that email and let you know if I want a hard copy of anything.
Yeah, may I also suggest that the New York State Tug Hill Commission, those are three words, Tug Hill Commission, has some really good readable, usable materials that are New York State-specific that you may want to look at. They've got training packets and, or subdivision review, site plan review, and special permits, CBA stuff. And it's, it won't overload you. It's just some good, basic, correct information that may be helpful to you.
Yeah, you have some links. Forward them around to Marina.
Okay.
We, we're just going to be compiling a list of links that people can look at. I think as far as what's been sent around so far, what's missing is Seeker. So if you have any suggestions for Seeker training, Mindy?
I do. The, the New York State DEC Seeker Handbook is interactive, and they've got workbooks that are separated out by subject matter and, you know, both the short form and the full EAF, and that will, you know, can walk us through any seeker analyses that the board needs to make.
And for the new members, Seeker is a state environmental review, and we haven't gotten involved in one of those in a while. For large projects, that's a significant part of them. For residential projects, not so much. We don't, we don't, most residential projects are exempt from environmental reviews. So who knows when we'll see one again, but that's a significant thing to be trained on. So with that, we'll, we'll keep training materials to be a moving project.
Is there some minimum number of, like, credits we need, or?
Yeah, you need four hours a year. And I asked Marina what people's training records were because they're getting towards the end of the year, and I don't think we've done any training this year, but I think most people have carryover training from prior years. But I hadn't seen any clear records.
Um, that might be because, well, before Marina, Linda was handling some of those docs. If I received a training certificate, went into the personnel files, so I'll work with Marina and see if she has all the current information.
I sent her a large number of emails with training records that I have because I usually, after we, if we do a training as a group, I used to send a note to Linda about it, and I have my own registrations, but I don't know, there's probably gaps that are missing. But I did send a bunch of stuff that I had access to to Marina already, so I guess when she gets back, that'll be a fun task to sort some of that out.
Yeah, we'll figure it out, and I'm not worried about last year. I think last year is going to be one of those, just call it a COVID year. I mean, it's hard to make people do training during a pandemic.
Okay, so moving on, is there any other, particularly from the new members, do you have any questions about training at this time?
No, no, thank you.
Okay. So then the last couple things were, I don't know if anyone had a chance to take a look at the letter to the town board, if anyone had any concerns about that. So, Dorothy, I think I sent you a copy that was, was the version that went out to everybody else. I sent that out to you earlier. So since Marina's not in, I guess you would be sending it out. Would that be correct, Dorothea?
Yes, it would. Bringing it up for myself here.
Yeah, if you want, you can put it on the screen if you want.
All right, hold on. Sorry, I don't do this from home too often, so. I'm sorry, I don't think my computer is going to let me do it from here. But I have the letter, so if you want to.
Let's see.
Just wondering if anyone had any concerns, wording changes, or anything like that they wanted to do.
I thought it was fairly straightforward. I'm comfortable with it as written.
Yeah, if I may jump in, I mean, I'm a little uncomfortable with it. It's not that there's anything wrong with the substance of the letter. But the planning board has specific jurisdiction under both the village code and under New York State law. And it's limited to site plan review, subdivision approval, and certain advisory opinions that, that arise under New York State village law and the Village of Pittsburgh zoning code. that, that arise under New York State Village Law and the Village of Pittsburgh zoning code. It's the, the, the village's planning board doesn't have really any independent authority to comment on the town code or town zoning changes. Now you've got an interest in it. Um, but my suggestion would be that you share your interest with the town of Pittsburgh as residents of the town and you can write a joint letter and you can mention that you're all members of the PCBA. But the PCBA really doesn't have, um, you know, jurisdiction or authority or the power to formally comment on the town's zoning changes.
So this is, um, I think you gave a slightly different twist on this before. I, I think we, we would all agree that certainly the town doesn't need, I guess we wouldn't be acting in any official capacity and the town, they're just comments that we'd be giving. And the town would just be listening to them and they're no obligation to do anything at all with them.
Yeah, I, I guess my thought was, I mean, it seems like as a board, we can make a statement, whether or not the town takes, takes any weight to that is another thing. I completely agree. We have no authority to tell them what to do to direct them, how to change their zoning regulation. But just as in anything, right? The board can vote to uh, make a public facing statement of just about anything, right? I think we saw that over this whole last year, over various political statements made by the town or the village or various boards. Um, I think this board, before I joined it, um, unanimously voted to make a statement regarding certain political matters. Um, so I, I guess I'd kinda lean in that direction that if, if the board wants to make a statement or a public comment, it should be able to. Um, I guess that's kinda where I'm thinking, but I mean, Mindy, please like crack my understanding. I, I am not a, I'm not a zoning attorney. I don't, you know, this isn't my area. Well, I, I guess the, what I'm reacting to really is the content of the letter where um, it's proposed that this board ask the town, it says, we'd like to request an opportunity to provide comment to the town for their consideration. I mean, you can provide comment, but it doesn't, it seems a little odd to me for a village municipal board to reach out to the town and say, will you accept our comments? I mean, of course they'll accept the comments. The, the, there's really nothing substantive in the letter about what the next year of the comments are gonna be. So I, I, I think that's what I was reacting to. And the other concern, yeah, the other concern that I have and you know, the, it, it's, it's hard to put this in context cause there isn't any substance in the letter other than we'd like to engage with you to make formal comments. Um, is that we have to be careful as board members when we make public statements about uh, issues of policy that uh, we're careful that those statements cannot come back and be used as an indication that the entire board or certain board members have either a bias or a prejudgment towards certain types of applications or uh, you know, municipal zoning projects. So uh, you know, we, we had the situation in connection with a, another matter a couple of years ago where an unhappy applicant uh, sought to challenge uh, decisions that were made by municipal boards because they thought that some of the board members were biased. And when we start weighing in on the substance of applications, we need to be careful that we're not creating some type of appearance that there is bias on behalf of the board members or the entire board with respect to some types of projects or some types of land use um, applications. I don't think Justin can see you, Susan.
Oh, uh, so um, I, I would also like to weigh in on the second paragraph, which I think goes kind of way, way beyond. You know, what is appropriate for the, the planning board. I, I mean, I, I think that's very out of line, asking, asking to meet with the, with the consultant. This, this is not our project. If we wanna write a letter, I think we should write a letter, but I would also wanna see being very specific about what, where our concerns would, would be. Um, if it has to do with um, traffic coming into the village, which is our concern and something is planned that could, you know, have an immediate impact on traffic volume, I think that's a place for us uh, perhaps to, to, to weigh in, but I, I, I would want it to be specific. I think this is uh, this is kind of backwards. If we want to make a comment, I think we should write a letter and, and make a comment, but I hope it would have some focus and um, and I'm, I don't, uh, I, I'm not comfortable with asking to, to meet with their consultants.
Justin, is there something specific you want to comment on?
Um, I very well may just go and log on to their website and make a few comments myself of some particular regions of interest. If um, that's where we wanna go, that's where we wanna go. Um, I talked to Mayor Plummer, um, I think yesterday about this a little bit. And she talked, Town Supervisor Bill Smith, it's, and it sounded like their conversation, Bill Smith had requested that they comment on property, he asked the village board members of, of concern to just go ahead and fill in comments um, with whatever mechanism they have on the town website at the moment, which I think is a property specific one. So that's been apparently the entirety of the comment. Now, as far as for some of Mindy's comments about ability to do this, when, when something goes on in another municipality that's with, that's near the borders of another one, they're required to give notice to the other municipality. And then I would presume any governmental entity in the other municipality is surely welcome to comment. But what the originating municipality has to actually consider, I'm sure is quite limited.
Sorry, I'm still not following. Is there something specific that you wanna comment on? With respect to the town of Pittsburgh and their zoning regulation?
Susan mentioned one of the key things, which is traffic. Um, and limiting maybe this, uh, I'm not sure what they can do to um, well, they could do a lot, I guess. I mean, they have use considerations before them. And I don't think they've ever given any consideration at all to how it impacts the village, which is uh, not the right thing to do. I'm not uh, sure whether our concerns or comments would change that behavior or not, which is a whole separate matter. So if people wanna abandon this letter, that's fine with me. I can just go ahead and log on to the website and make a few comments.
I, well, I, I mean, you can do that. I, I mean, I guess, I guess I was trying to find the middle ground. It seemed like Mindy and Susan voiced um, you know, specific concerns, not just, you know, I think my point was that I think as a board, we should be able to make a comment if we all agree upon it, which and but Mindy, you know, voiced a specific concern that one, the letter's pretty general, doesn't address anything in specific that we have an issue with. And you know, I think to Susan's point was that, you know, should we really be meeting with their consultants? Probably not on their dollar, probably not in general. Um, but you know, you mentioned a couple of things like traffic. So if there is a specific concern you have with the regulation, you know, maybe that's something we could talk about the next meeting and to the extent you wanna, there's unanimous, you know.
Yeah, so part of my thing here is it's cumbersome and time consuming to come up with a statement as a group. We gotta meet and discuss it in public, then write it and review it. It takes a while. So if we're gonna put out something, I thought it would be nice as a courtesy to let them know, hey, we intend to put out something for you. Um, or give them an invitation and then it won't, then when we submit whatever we're gonna submit or if one of them attends one of our meeting and we have a casual conversation, that's fine. But the end of the comment period, I think is uh, the town's official comment period is only about a week out. So we're gonna miss that unless we send them a note. Um, so I think my thinking is, I don't know what we'd like to say as a group yet. I have a few thoughts of my own, but those right now, those are my own thoughts. Um, so I, my thinking was to just send them a little note saying, hey, we'd like to send you something at some point or talk to you at some point and see where that goes.
Right. I guess I'm of the view of we make a comment when we have a comment to make.
That, that's another option. So we just send them a letter when we have something drafted.
Yeah. Yeah. Yep, I'm, I'm, I'm for that approach.
Okay, if we're not, so it sounds like the consensus is do not send the town a letter now. If we um, wanna individually send them some comments, we're welcome to do that. And if we decide to spend some time and compose a few thoughts um, as a group, we'll do that. And then whenever that's ready, that's ready and we'll send it to them. Is that where everyone is right now?
I think that would work.
Yeah.
I don't envision my comments in a, a letter to the town to be any different than my comments that I would place on the map that they posted as an individual citizen. So it may be that some of my comments might apply in a, in a joint letter or that, you know, you guys think of things outside of what I have and then we just kinda come to terms as to whether or not we all agree and wanna put our names jointly behind some of those ideas.
Okay, all right, then um, I guess we'll let this letter lie and uh, not act on it. That's fine with me. Um, I appreciate everyone's comments and we'll see uh, I guess I could put this back on the agenda for next month if we have a meeting to see what we wanna do with this. So individually, if anyone wants to jot down a few notes or thoughts you might have that you wanna bring for discussion on our next meeting, by all means.
Okay.
Otherwise, by all means, submit them on the town's website within, I think, the next week.
Yep.
Okay, Justin, this may be a good time to stop the um, work session and enter the formal public meeting.
Sounds good to me. We're past 6:30. Um, okay, well, let's make a motion to open the regular meeting. So, whoever you wanna do that, Dorothea?
Wanna close the work session first?
Well, we'll, I'll revise the motion then to close the workshop session and open the regular meeting.
Second.
Okay, um, member Loda?
Aye.
Member Shannon?
Aye.
Member Marshall?
Aye.
Member Kuchera?
Aye.
Chairman Bluester?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, so I guess we'll make our, um, a couple, a quick announcement since it's our official start of our regular meeting. Uh, first of all, we're meeting virtually under orders uh, from Governor Cuomo regarding the coronavirus pandemic. There is a notice on the village website that any member of the public can use to um, get a link to observe our deliberations today.
Excuse me, Justin, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Um, I just don't want you to have to do it again. I know that you closed the work session, but I, I didn't hear you open the public meeting.
Uh, we made it, the motion was to close the work session and open the meeting.
Okay, sorry.
With a combined motion.
Good answer.
I apologize.
Okay. Always happy to clarify things. Okay, so with that, the, the first announcement here is um, we had the, a continued public hearing for one South Main Street for a sign area variance for chandeliers. And the building inspector has revised his code interpretation for the sign. And he has determined that the sign that they proposed is permitted under code and does no, no longer requires a variance. So the application is moot and we will not be discussing it. Um, so the only other things in our agenda was taking a look at the meeting minutes and that resolution that was put together. And it looks like Marina got the three 15 minutes on the agenda, but didn't get our last meeting minutes for our last meeting on our agenda. So I guess we'll have to do that at our, our next one. I know they're written up and I reviewed them and um, but I guess it didn't make our agendas, but that's okay. So let's say, first of all, let's go over the resolution. And Mindy, you had comments that to remove the text findings of fact from there?
There, there were two reasons for, one is um, historically this board has never parsed out the findings from fact and the conclusions for each of the elements of the variance application. And the second is that um, this particular resolution does not consistently differentiate between facts and conclusions. And it was a little confusing to me. Uh, so for those two reasons, I thought it best just to remove the words that said findings of fact and have the conclusions and the facts just remain in paragraph form. I think that would be fine.
Sounds fine to me. Any other thoughts?
That's me. I agree.
Well, all good.
Okay, um, would, did anyone want to make any changes? I'm hearing a lot of silence.
I'm good. Looks good.
Agreed.
No changes here.
Okay, I'm good with it. All right, so we'll leave it with the changes suggested by Mindy then. And then we'll get this finalized and sent out to the, signed and sent out to the applicant. So what do you, uh, Mindy, should we make any motion about this or we've already approved the resolution? When we eventually get to meeting minutes and accept it, then um, it'll, it'll make its way into the meeting minutes for that meeting.
Yeah, that's fine with me.
Okay.
Dorothy, did you wanna comment on that?
I'm just a little confused. Um, did Mindy, uh, Mindy, Marina, now you're saying you received the minutes from three 15?
These are minutes from two weeks ago.
Oh, you had a meeting two weeks ago. Okay. All right, so do you need to approve the minutes for three 15?
Um, we have two things. We had two sets of minutes. The resolution, so the minutes and the resolution are from different meetings.
Okay.
And I don't know why the minutes didn't, that were associated with the resolution. I don't know why they didn't make the meeting packet. I'd asked her to put them in there, but they didn't make it for whatever reason. That's okay, we can move on. But, so that's the confusion here is the resolution and the minutes were separated in this meeting packet.
Okay. All right, so you don't have minutes to approve?
Yes, just, well, we do, March 15th.
Okay. Gotcha. I think.
So that resolution 2021 dash five was um, associated with our um, minutes from, uh, what was that, April 5th?
April 5th.
Okay. Understand now.
Okay, um, so if, if the, if they, that decision is resolved, uh, so Dorothy, I think my Okay, so if the, if they, that decision is resolved, so Dorothy, I think my suggestion would be, I'll just, we'll take that in its final form, sign it, send it out to the applicant. And I can get with you later this week to get you a signed copy of that.
Okay.
So then we're on to the minutes for 315. Did anyone have any revisions to those?
Nope, they look good to me.
Okay, so that was a fairly, I think that was a meeting where we didn't have any applications. Again, we just had a few discussions and that was it.
Yep.
Okay. All right then, if we're okay with that, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of March 15, 2021, as drafted.
Second.
Hey, Dorothea?
Member Loda? Member Shannon?
Aye.
Member Marshall?
Aye.
Member Kuchara, I'm going to skew, you're going to abstain?
Yes.
And then Chairman Belista?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay. Does there anything else anyone wanted to talk about? Because that gets us through our agenda.
Justin, I have requested a brief attorney client session with John, Dave, and Joanne. But that's at the close of, you know, after all, our other business is done.
Okay, fine by me. Is there any other topics anyone to bring up? Is there anything anyone wanted to add to a future agenda?
Well, just, I, I do now that I, you know, when an application is withdrawn and the building inspector changes his mind, I, I would just be interested in kind of knowing, you know, what he, what he had to say. So in the, I doubt that's going to occur very often, but you know, we did look at it. We were beginning to form opinions and I would like to just know how his interpretation changed.
Yeah, maybe that's useful. I'll, I'll explain a little bit on that. After our last meeting, we had some questions about some other properties and like in Brassebois, the banks and some other things as to what happened with signs there. So I mentioned that to the building inspector and I talked to him a little bit about it. And I mentioned, hey, these other properties, they may not be classified the same way with regards to their signs. And then he took a look at it and like, hmm, I don't know what, so he had, so tried to sort out what happened with the last ones. He had to do a little bit of work to figure out what type of signs that those properties were. And when looking into that, he thought it makes sense to change his interpretation for this one. I think he spent quite a bit of time looking into the history of signs for this property and some other properties. So that's kind of where this came about by trying to sort out what was different between this one and some other businesses that had signs approved. At least that's what I think it came about.
Well, maybe in the future, we could just ask Steve to, you know, just for a couple of lines.
Let's see, I think he, did you get the email I sent out earlier? I'm trying to see what he.
I didn't see anything that explained his thinking.
Okay, well, what basically changed is this classification of the type of sign. So there is a sign that's allowed for a single business, that's a standalone building. And then there's a different section of code that applies to a building that is shared by multiple businesses. So he changed his interpretation of it from being a sign on a single building business to a multi-business. Let me see what the.
Justin, I have your email in front of me. If you'd like me to read it.
Yeah, go ahead and read it. I don't have it in front of me.
Okay. This is the email from Steve to Justin today at 3:07. And it says, "Justin, based on the determination that the building containing chandeliers is a multiple commercial building, they will not require a variance for the size of the signage over the second entrance on the Monroe Ave side per 168-7B. Please forward to your board members."
So I apologize. I, I didn't see that.
Oh, you sent it out right before the meeting.
That's, that's why.
That's why. And I sent a note out about a week ago talking about a discussion that Steve and I had, and he was considering changing his determination, but that was up to him. So I, when he, I asked him on Friday to, please, if you're going to change something, please put it in writing so we know what it is. So that's what this is.
Yep, that's all I was interested in. So thanks.
Right, it gives that whole thing closure. So it should be in the minutes.
Okay, well, Mindy read it. So now it can be in the minutes. Any other, anyone have anything else or shall we adjourn?
I have nothing further.
I'm good.
Yeah, let's, let's adjourn and I'm, Mindy is going to just address, just chat with Joanne, David, John and me for a couple of minutes.
All right, I suggest John make a nice motion. I don't know if you've made a motion yet, John.
No, I've been quiet in the background. So what do you want me to do, a motion to close the meeting?
Sure.
All right, and make a motion to close the meeting.
Second.
Member Loda?
Aye.
Member Shannon?
Aye.
Member Marshall?
Aye.
Member Kuchara?
Aye.
Chairman Belista?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, um, so what I'll do is Dave, I'm going to choose you. You'll be organizer.
Aye.
So you can close everything out.
You might want to stop recording, Dorothea?